Okay. I think we'll go ahead and get started. Everyone have their seat. We'll call to order the regular council meeting of November the 10th, 2020. I believe that to begin, Councilmember Tilke is doing the pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to do this tonight as we honor our veterans. And just as a side note, as a dependent of a career Army, father and war veteran, I just wanted to say a thank you and a blessing to all the families who are waiting at home for our veterans to come home. Please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Eric, if you would offer the invocation for us.
Thank you for the opportunity to do this. It's a privilege. It's an honor, Mayor, council members, and Mayor-elect. Good to see Bridget. It's been quite a year, and I know you all know that. I don't need to tell you that. It's been a strange time to lead in any capacity, and I'm sure that the burdens that you've had have been plenty and exciting. So, thank you very much for leading in this time. I just wanted to tell you that before I pray. We really appreciate you. I love this town. I've been here over 25 years and just blessed to have wonderful leadership. Let's pray. Lord, we come to you and we say that you're holy, you are God, there is no other, that you are sovereign. We thank you, Lord, that you have protected this community throughout this pandemic, throughout craziness going on in our country around us, Lord. We thank you for our Chief of Police, Chief Solberg, Lord, and the steady hand that he's had in this season and the things that he's had to deal with. God, we thank you for all the first responders who have been such a blessing in times of need. God, as we're thinking about the issues that we're having, I just pray for families even right now and those that are feeling desperate in our community, maybe very disconnected, possible despair and even depression. I just, I speak life over them right now. God, I pray that you would just even orchestrate opportunities for people to come and to just show up and show love and concern for them at just the right time. God, I thank you for these leaders that are seated here in this room. Thank you for our town manager and all the staff, Lord. I thank you that you have blessed this community with stable, good leadership. And I pray wisdom that comes from you to fill the minds of each one of those that's leading in our town. So, Lord, we lean into you moving into the future. We have hope, and I thank you. This is a community of hope. We have hope. We move into our future with great excitement. God, we thank you for these 100 years that we've had as a community, and we look forward to the next 100 years. May we continue to prosper and may we continue to be a safe place where families, where people can thrive, and may you be glorified in all that's done in and through this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Let's have the roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski. Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke. Councilmember Amy Yentas.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Hendricks, welcome. We look forward to working with you and serving the public here in Gilbert. So, thank you for the service you've volunteered to render. At this time, we have a couple of proclamations that were previously issued. I'll just point them out. One was a proclamation declaring November the 1st is Extra Mile Day in the town of Gilbert, has been passed on to the participants there. And the second was a proclamation declaring November 28th, 2020, is Small Business Saturday in the town of Gilbert. We always enjoy Small Business Saturday, which follows Black Friday, and we appreciate those two, in those two proclamations. We also have a couple of recognitions tonight that I'd like to present because these people mean a lot to me, very special to me, and I'll, I think we start with, Bill Spence, we'll start with you down here at the podium.
It's my privilege to be able to recognize a couple of special people tonight, and I want to start with former councilmember Bill Spence, who took the time to serve this community and serve it very well. We appreciate all of his efforts, and I can tell you especially for the efforts he made to bring the USS Arizona back home. We're thankful for that and look forward to further things he's going to do in the community to help serve the residents of Gilbert because I know how much he loves them and cares for them. We have a certificate that we want to present to Bill. As Mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Bill Spence for his service as councilmember for the town of Gilbert in 2020. Bill Spence carried out the duties of the office of councilmember honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. Thank you. Thank you. We've got some other gifts over here for you. It's the one way we could box Gilbert up for you, so it's, yeah, so, enjoy. Thank you. Lisa Maxwell, if you'd come up. Underneath that mask, you have a great big smile because you're excited. You're excited to go to a new home and hopefully soon and be able to take up a new life. But Lisa has served in the town of Gilbert for how many years? Eight and a half years, and we greatly appreciate her service as our town clerk during that time. She's a wonder person. She's done things that we've asked of her on short notice many times, and we appreciate all that she's done. Let me read this recognition. As Mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express our heartfelt congratulations to Town Clerk Lisa Maxwell upon her retirement from the town of Gilbert. Since 2012, Lisa Maxwell has served the town of Gilbert in the Clerks Department diligently and admirably, being appointed to Town Clerk in 2015. It is with immense gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend Lisa for extensive and longstanding partnership with the town. And I'll just say that it goes on to explain all the many things that she's accomplished, which is long, so I'll let her read through those on the plaque. But at the end, I want to say, on behalf of the town council staff and the citizens of our community, it is with respect and gratefulness for Lisa Maxwell's service to the citizens of Gilbert that I convey our deep appreciation for her outstanding contributions and hard work. Signed by me as the mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. This bouquet comes from the community. The community appreciates all the work, all the work that you've done to help over the years, and they wanted to make sure you're recognized. The other flowers that are over here on the table are from the town staff and the council. Appreciate all the work that you've done, and we have a card for you. I think there's some other goodies over there on the table, too. You probably can't carry all these. This is from the manager's office, which is beautiful. It's a beautiful rendering.
Actually, Mayor, we wanted to have her take a picture of it and then give it back to us. It wasn't actually to keep.
You're going to have to get a little red wagon to carry all the stuff out that we've got for you. We boxed up some more stuff about Gilbert, it looks like, so. You want to hold, just keep these for her? All right. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your service.
Again, thanks to both of you for the service to the community. We are so grateful for the great things you've both done. Move to communications from citizens.
Mayor, we've had no requests to speak this evening, so I'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you.
On the consent calendar, we're going to pull item 4B to be continued at the December 1st council meeting. We're going to pull item 10 for a staff presentation, items 16 and 17 for discussion at the request of Councilmember Taylor, item number 19A for a staff presentation, and we're going to bring forward items 31 and 32 for boards and commissions. So, may I have a motion to approve items 4, 4A, 5, 6, 6A, 7, 8, 9, 11 through 15, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22?
So moved.
Second. Please vote. Thank you. We'll move to item 31. Agenda item 31 is a motion to appoint Marcy Norton to the Fire and Police Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Local Pension Boards with a term beginning December 1st, 2020, and ending November 30th, 2024. Second. Please vote. Thank you. Councilmember Yentas?
Yep. I motion to appoint Robert Elmer to the Industrial Development Authority to fill the remainder of the term beginning November 10th, 2020, and ending March 12th, 2023.
Second.
Please vote. Thank you. We will move on to item 10 for staff presentation. This presentation is surrounding contracts related to the North Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. The presentation was prepared this evening in the event that there were any questions that came up related to that item. It's essentially just a high-level summary of the briefings that council received last week. I'm happy to run through it if you like, or feel free to proceed with approving the item.
I think for full transparency for the public, I'd like to go through the slides. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. Mayor members of council, I'm Jessica Marlowe. I'm the Public Works Director for the town, and we're here. Item 10 on the agenda tonight is related to our North Water Treatment Plant replacement project needs. As you were presented at the financial retreat in April, the North Water Treatment Plant is in need of reconstruction. It's a 45 million gallon a day plant that serves primarily the northern portion of the town. It is supplied with Salt River Project water. In 2019, we underwent a full condition assessment of the facility and found that there were more than 35 projects that needed to be completed in order to address deficiencies in the construction quality of the plant. Those projects were going to cost more than $70 million in order to rehabilitate that facility, primarily related to poor construction quality. It is not getting the useful life out of it that we would expect. The plant is approximately 25 years old, and the costs needed to repair it are in excess of what we would consider industry standard. In addition to that, we have water quality challenges at that plant as a result of deteriorating source water quality coming off of the watershed in the Salt and Verde River system. Due to catastrophic wildfires that occurred in that watershed, we see high levels of organic material coming into our plant. When that organic material combines with chlorine that we use for disinfection, it creates a disinfection byproduct. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had some exceedances related to disinfection byproducts. That's a result of the fact that this plant was not designed to treat for disinfection byproducts. It was built prior to the regulations for those contaminants going in place. In addition, the water quality in that system is deteriorating as a result of the wildfires and the runoff that we get into that system from rains and things like that. So, in 2006, those water quality requirements were put in place for disinfection byproducts. In 2017, we had some violations, and so in 2018 and 19, we completed a water quality master plan. And the water quality master plan found that disinfection byproducts were the number one challenge that Gilbert was going to face with respect to water quality compliance now and in the future. As a part of this timeline, we also completed that North Water Treatment Plant condition assessment that found the construction quality deficiencies. Throughout all of this, we're also going through a census right now, and that's important because once our official population through the census exceeds 250,000 people, we are going to have to add more compliance sampling sites for disinfection byproducts. And that means that areas that are not currently, in the system that are not currently monitored will have to be monitored. And what we found as we started sampling throughout the system, to orient you to these maps, this is what we call a heat map of our disinfection byproduct concentrations. North of the black line is the area served by the North Water Treatment Plant, and all of those little red and yellow spots are areas of elevated disinfection byproduct occurrences. South of that is the service area of the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant. That primarily treats only Central Arizona Project water, which is a much different water quality. That water treatment plant always has, also is a different type of treatment technology and is better set up to treat for those disinfection byproducts. So, what we found is we have all these spots in the system that are part of the North Water Treatment Plant service area that the water quality are areas that we have to address. And the North Water Treatment Plant is the backbone for that entire portion of the system. The North Water Treatment Plant does not have the technology to treat for those disinfection byproducts. So, we've made other improvements into the system to help improve the water quality, including pumping groundwater. And that's important because groundwater is a nonrenewable resource, and we need the water treatment plant to be able to treat the surface water, all of the surface water that we have available to us, so that we can save that groundwater for emergencies and for times of drought when the surface water is not available. The third component to the treatment plant reconstruction and expansion is the water resources component. What we've seen over the last couple of years since our water treat, water resources master plan was completed was exceedingly high increasing water demands. And based on that data, you can see on the graph, the bars are the projected demands and the line is the actual demands for 2016 and 2020. And you can see in 2020, the demand that we actually saw far exceeded what was projected in our water resources master plan. What this is showing us is that by 2030, we need to have our water treatment plant essentially built out to 98% of its total capacity. So, since we already have to rebuild the water treatment plant as a result of the construction deficiencies and the water quality needs, we are also recommending that we build this plant to its ultimate capacity of 60 million gallons a day instead of just replacing it like-for-like with the 45 million gallon a day capacity. This is also really important because we have something to meet called safe yield. And safe yield, from a water resources standpoint, is the pumping of that groundwater that we pull out of the ground, we have to replace, and that's part of the Groundwater Management Act of 1980. And all community water systems have to meet that safe yield requirement by 2025. The town has done a really good job over the last several decades of storing a lot of extra water in the ground. When we had extra surface water supplies, when we were able to get year-long leases of cap water and different things, we're able to store that and build up credits like a bank underground. We've also always reused or recharged all of our wastewater effluent that's been treated and built up a good store of these groundwater credits. But currently now, we're starting to use those credits to supplement our groundwater or our system demands because our North Water Treatment Plant doesn't have the ability to treat to the water quality standards that we need, and it doesn't have the ability to produce all of the water that we're going to need for future, future build-out. So, from a safe yield standpoint, and we showed this graph in the briefings last week, the yellow lines or the yellow bars are our Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant. We run that plant at the same 24 million gallon a day capacity throughout the year with the exception of January, there's no yellow bar. That's because we take it down for planned maintenance. The gray bars are the North Water Treatment Plant capacity, and in this scenario, this is what we call our safe yield scenario, this is a 60 million gallon a day North Water Treatment Plant capacity, and you see the orange bars are our groundwater. And so, we're using very little groundwater in this scenario, just in our hottest months in June and July, and then in November, when the North Water Treatment Plant gets taken out of service for maintenance as well. So, in this situation, we have a small amount of groundwater that we're still pumping, but we're able to meet that safe yield requirement in 2025. Conversely, if we build the North Water Treatment Plant at its 45 million gallon a day capacity, you see we have a lot more groundwater usage that we, that we're having to use to supplement in the hottest months of the year, and we would estimate that we would exceed that safe yield pumping by approximately 16%. What that means is we're having to use those stored groundwater credits simply because our North Water Treatment Plant doesn't have the capacity to treat water that we actually have available to us, surface water that's renewable that we could continue to use. We just don't have the ability to treat it. And what that means from a groundwater credit standpoint is within the next 40 or so years, those groundwater credits go away completely. All the credits that we've stored for decades are utilized when they didn't need to be. On the other hand, if we treat, if we build it to 60 million gallons a day, we're able to extend the use of those credits out beyond a 100-year planning window, which our water resources manager Eric said is as far out as he looks on any, on any given day. So, we're still using them, but we're using them at a much slower rate, and that's something that would, in the future, cost us millions and millions of dollars on an annual basis to try to go out and find more water, to try to then replenish those credits that we already have the ability to use the water and we've already paid for it, you know, from the SRP system. We just need the capacity and the technology to do so. So, before you tonight, our three contracts, a contract for our professional consulting services contract with Corona, they're our technical advisor. They completed our water quality master plan, and they're intimately familiar with all of our water quality challenges, and they'll be acting as a, as a technical advisor to the town for this project. We have our architectural and engineering services contract with Waterworks Engineers. They have done a variety of projects with us at the North Water Treatment Plant, and they are the design engineer for the project. And then we have our preconstruction, preconstruction services for our construction manager at risk, and that's the contractor that was selected to do the construction of the plant. And these contracts will take you to 30% design of the facility so that we can get cost estimates from our contractor and bring that to you at the finance retreat in the spring so that we can share with you the funding needs and different funding sources and options that we would be utilizing for this project. And that's it.
Thank you, Jessica.
No questions?
Are there questions from councilmembers?
Sorry, I know that was a lot. It's like four hours worth of material condensed into.
Could you explain a little bit, Jessica, where we stand in the region on safe yield and why that's so important?
Yeah, absolutely. So, right now, we use about 30% of our production comes from groundwater, and that's something that is not sustainable. That safe yield threshold is about 10%, and so we have to reduce our groundwater usage from 30% down to that 10% in order to meet that, to meet that requirement.
And when we don't achieve safe yield, there's, there could be consequences since it was part of the Groundwater Management Act.
There could be.
Yes.
We'll take a motion on item 10.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. That passes, 7-0. We'll move on to items 16 and 17, requested for discussion by Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for letting me address 16 and 17. These are change orders relative to sidewalk improvements in the Heritage District to align with the ADA standards funded by CBDG funds. So, wanted to vote on these separately. You know, I have reservations with usage that we have. CBDG funds are really supposed to go to housing because it's out of HUD, not necessarily infrastructure. So, we are putting the town at risk by not really using them for its intended purpose. If you look for what the true intended reason of CBDG and HUD funding is for, number one. Number two, this, these are change orders. So, we're going above and beyond existing contracts, and this is exactly what I pointed out when we did the ADA study a couple of years ago. When you'd want to, somebody almost made up a little problem that we were out of compliance or maybe not in compliance, but we actually had a pace and a rhythm of funding all of the curbs that were perfectly good sidewalk curbs and sidewalks, and then we had to make them ADA and all that stuff. We had, we had budget, we had funding, we were pacing, and then someone felt concerned that we might not be doing enough and might be getting audits and penalties, even though there were no letters, there was no indication, there was nothing from the federal government or any other agency that we were in violation of any of this. Anyways, nevertheless, a very expensive study was passed and it came back, and at the time, my position and encouragement was, when you, when you look at compliance matters, you can take three positions. You can ignore it, which You can ignore it, which I don't recommend. We should be compliant with every law on the books. But you can be at compliance, you can do what exactly the law says, or you can go above and beyond, try to win awards and look good and, you know, waste a lot of money, basically, doing those gold-plated things. And that's effectively what the study came back, is they really encouraged the town to go above and beyond and win awards and all that kind of stuff. And I just don't think that that's a really good use of our taxpayer dollars is going above and beyond. Now, we actually have two change orders to go even above and beyond that. You know, in budget discussions, we all that participated heard about how few resources we had, and we couldn't fund essential things that we would like to have. My favorite one was shade, you know? We said, oh, we don't have any money for shade and things like that. But when we see things like this, where we're funding gold-plating standards, we don't really need to. We can really come down here, and we're now doing change orders using questionable. That gives me pause, I want to pull it and be able to not, because I think we're putting risk upon risk and then misleading our taxpayers by saying we're saving so much money when we're really funding things that we don't necessarily, we can be fully compliant with the ADA standards and offer high-quality infrastructure to those who really need that, while still funding some of the other important things in our town. So Mayor, thank you for letting me speak to that issue and vote separately on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to comment that there are several cases regarding municipalities that have been forced to spend certain amounts of money to comply with ADA. In this case, in the Heritage District, there's a lot of pedestrian activity, so it seems like a high priority. Does staff have any comments regarding the purpose of facilitating these changes through a change order? Was that because of additional work that was not anticipated or additional work that was provided to a contractor in that area?
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, we've got Melanie Dykstra available on the WebEx channel to answer any questions you may have about this.
Thank you. Melanie, are you available to speak?
She's actually just finishing up with a Mayak presentation, but I think she can be on in just a moment. So, thank you.
Okay. I'm okay with continuing.
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, I think Rick Cooker is also on the line and could answer questions on this.
Hi, Rick. Are you available to speak on these items?
I am, thank you. Mayor, Councilmembers, so on item 16, the change order for that was to add some storm sewer lines that was flooding an area around the Heritage Center. And we did not want to leave that area flooded and then come back later and have to put a storm drain with another project. So we added scope to that project for that storm. For item 17, conducted a master plan for the Heritage Center area. And once we determined what the level of improvements that would be made, now we're change ordering to get the design documents done.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any other questions? Okay. Can we have a motion on items 16 and 17?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
A second.
Thank you. That passes for three. Move on to Agenda Item 19A, which is a staff presentation for the Gilbert Police Department Dispatch Center.
A little bit of feedback there. Robert Carmona, Parks and Recreation Director. And I'll be introing tonight's presentation and then turning it over. So many of you know that the Council Care Subcommittee has been working hard over the past few months and throughout August and September, continuing to meet weekly as we identified priority projects to use for the Council Care's funding. Many of them have already come your way. So if you remember the nonprofit assistance, the economic business assistance, resident assistance within Parks and Recreation, and then tonight was a public safety assistance. So with that, this was an item that was prioritized from that subcommittee group. We originally intended to bring it to you at the fall retreat, but with that being postponed until the spring, we didn't want to wait to bring it to you any longer. So tonight, we wanted to be able to bring it forward to you. And with that, I'm going to introduce Kim Weber, who will be giving the presentation on the dispatch center expansion.
A little shorter than him. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Kim Weber. I'm the dispatch manager for our 911 Center for the Town of Gilbert. I want to take this opportunity to thank the ladies and gentlemen that worked the dispatch center 24/7 to provide public safety for all of our citizens, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you what we do and the critical need that we have over the next few years. What brought us here was that over the last several decades, our town has grown. Everyone is aware of that. We're one of the fastest-growing towns in the Valley and in the nation. If we're looking, I can't see that far, apparently. Back in 1985, we saw a population of about 18,000 citizens that was serviced by 25 police department employees on one radio channel. Fast forward to 2020, now we have a population of over 260,000 citizens serviced by over 400 PD employees, but still on just one radio channel. You can see in that that we are burdened and overstaffed on that one radio channel. As a comparison, in 2019, the Gilbert Police Department had over 1 million push-to-talk radio transmissions that occur on our main channel. Compare that to other agencies of a similar size, they only had 500,000 push-to-talk transmissions in that year. That means we are handling twice the volume on our main channel than our comparative agencies in the Valley. That's a heavy burden on the dispatcher who has to handle and maintain officer's safety for all the officers that are on the road, as well as get calls dispatched to get our citizens the help that they need. Our current dispatch center is approximately 4,400 square feet. It comprises of 12 dispatch consoles that allows us to work 24/7. However, those dispatch consoles are over 16 years old. Generally, dispatch consoles, their life expectancy is about 10 years. So we are well beyond that life expectancy for a dispatch console. We do not have the adequate space to do any kind of major renovation or addition to that space. You can see in the picture of our comm center that we have utilized all the space that we can. We don't have any office space for our supervisors because we need all that floor space for the dispatch consoles in order to have the staff on hand to maintain 24/7 dispatching capabilities. Along with that, some of the other inadequacies that we have for our current space is that we don't have a true decompression room. For the work our dispatchers do, the traumatic calls that they take, they need a space that they can take away from off the floor and not hear what's going on on the floor while they're trying to reconcile with the stress that they just encounter, such as a baby drowning or a suicide call. They need time to decompress off of that so that they can come back on the floor and take that next phone call without having an adverse reaction. We need a true decompression room for them so they can serve our citizens. We don't have adequate storage in the area. We also don't have adequate training space. Our current training room right now can hold at a maximum three people, and that's without any social distancing that is so important right now. We need adequate training so that we can have staff trained, so they can man the additional radio channels, so that they can serve our public. It all intertwines with each other. And as I mentioned, the social distancing, this pandemic has really brought to light how inadequate our space is and how hard it is to keep our dispatchers social distance while trying to maintain a fully-staffed center in order to serve the public. We may have seen a lot of things happen in the public with the economic businesses being down, but in our dispatch center, we have not seen a decrease in calls for service. We're still experiencing the same number of 911 calls, same number of non-emergency calls, dispatching the same number of officers out there to the public. So we have not seen a decrease in operations, but also while trying to keep our dispatchers safe so that they can come in the next shift and maintain service. A solution to that problem would be to expand our dispatch center to where it needs to be for now and as well as into the future to full build-out in about 2030. The recommendation is that we take our, I know the picture's a little small, but the top left in the blue box is our current dispatch center. It's in the far corner of the second floor. I know many of you, if not all of you, have visited our lovely dispatch center. That's 4,400 square feet of the space that we occupy now. The proposal is that we take over the next two office sections, which is currently occupied by Internal Affairs and our hiring unit. That is about approximately 5,000 square feet. So if we're able to occupy that whole area in the yellow outline box, it'll bring us close to 10,000 square feet. The units that are displaced, if we take over their sections, would then be rehomed in about 1,000 square foot that's available in the counseling area, as well as some space that's available in the Highland Courts area when they vacate that area. So they will have a new home, even though we're taking over their space now, to have a bigger continuous dispatch center. The benefits of having a full expansion for our dispatch center means a lot of things for our police department and in return for the public, the citizens of Gilbert. Having a blank slate of 10,000 square feet to work with will allow us to design a state-of-the-art dispatch center that will allow us to have the infrastructure necessary to build out 24 dispatch consoles. If you've been to our center, you see how massive those desks are, and they hold anywhere between six to eight computer screens, as well as a lot of other equipment, radio equipment, 911 phone equipment. So a dispatch console is not like a normal office desk. It takes up a lot of space. So we need a lot of space in order to fit 24 consoles into a dispatch center. With a blank slate, we're able to design it so that we can have what I call flex use, meaning we have our main dispatch floor that's for regular operations, 911 calls, radio channels. But then we could also design a training center that's adequate for training multiple people at once, but as well as doubling the use of that, meaning it can open up into our dispatch floor where if we have civil unrest protests and we need to man another channel, or we have overflow of 911 calls, let's say we have some mass emergency, really bad storm or whatever it is, power outages, and we have an overflow of 911 calls, we don't have enough consoles on the floor to man those. We can open up our training room and use the training consoles as part of operations. That will allow us to do that and expand our operations in a matter of minutes. It will also allow us to design a dispatch console and install one that's state-of-the-art that will allow us to be prepared for next-generation 911, which is scary but exciting all at once. So we need the capability and the technology at our fingertips to be prepared for receiving texts to 911 directly into our center, not using a third-party platform that we're using right now. We need to be ready to serve our public when they're able to send pictures and photographs to us via 911, as well as video to 911. If they do a video chat with us on 911, we need to be prepared to accept those, and that's on a whole new level that all of the dispatch centers across the country are coming to terms with and trying to be prepared for that next wave of technology for 911. The other side of it is, for next-generation 911, is not just so much about the voice call, it's about data analytics. We need to have the technology in place and the infrastructure ready for all the new technology that is evolving around how to analyze where the emergency is. A prime example that's happening right now is that we use Rapid SOS every day. If you're familiar with Rapid SOS, you know that it takes your location data from your cell phone, your GPS data, versus from a cell tower triangulation. That means we may know your location seconds before the cell tower triangulation will even come in. We use this because Rapid SOS, a private company, gives us this program for free. And we're able to pull up the portal and see this and see the 911 calls mapping. But there are so many out there that are emerging this way. There's Uber will integrate with Rapid SOS so that we can see the Uber driver's information. If a passenger pushes the emergency key on the Uber app, we'll see that driver's vehicle description, location, and as well as track them on the map. This allows us to send emergency help to the caller without them even saying anything. So that's one of the things that we need to be prepared for to do. And as I mentioned earlier, we need that decompression room. We need to give mental health support to our dispatchers so that they can continue every day coming into work to serve our public, and they do that 24/7, 365, without asking for much recognition or any other thing. But they're human as well, and they still need that help. And I want to turn it over to my boss, Chief.
Thank you, Kim. Kim does such an excellent job. I wanted her to do these slides, but she gave me the money. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for the subcommittee and those who participated in the subcommittee in reviewing this and vetting it out to get it to where we are now. As you can see before you is our estimated budget. The total budget is 8.7 million. And as a reminder, we currently are, we just started a few weeks ago, the mini-expansion, which we are adding three dispatch terminals, which will work in the full expansion. We are working on installing those now, they'll be done this fiscal year. And some of the questions that we've talked about before is, how do we get by? If this is needed now, how do we bridge the gap between now and when we actually complete construction? I'll show you the timeline here in a minute. But this mini-expansion bridges that gap. It is tight, it is confined, but they do a great job. This will get us over that hump to where we can actually get the full expansion and take advantage of all the space that they need now and into the future. So that 700,000, as I mentioned, has already been funded, and we're already working on that expansion. The square footage, as the maps show, it's kind of hard to see, but overall, the total square footage of this project is 15,400 square feet. Keep in mind, we've been focusing on dispatch, but this project also allows us the ability to expand into the Highland Administrative Court area, which they will be vacating in approximately two years, year and a half. And so that allows us to take care of some of our space needs, problems that we have within PD. As mentioned, this will displace several units within our department to make the expansion for dispatch, and that's the other piece of the expansion, getting those units in the remodeled area of both our counseling and our Highland Courts area. And overall, the estimated cost per square foot for that 15,400 is 221 square feet, based on the industry, which is in line with the industry standards. The cost breakdown, professional services, just over 500,000. Construction management, once again, over 500,000. Construction, sorry, I think, I always forget the K, 5 million. 5.2 for construction. FFNE's furniture, fixtures, and equipment, 2.5. That does include the cost, as we mentioned already, which is budgeted to 700,000. The dispatch center expansion, our timeline, so with approval today, we would start the RFQ process starting next month. we would start the RFQ process starting next month. We should wrap that up by December, selecting the architects, the engineers, the construction management, project managers. We'll come back to you with those, counsel, to counsel with the contracts, approximately March to April. Then we would get our notice to proceed and work on programming, designing and value engineering, as important to discuss, as we did with our training facility. We have not put pen to paper as far as, we don't have anyone under contract to do the design, and so there is that opportunity for us to look for flex spaces and different opportunities to get multiple uses out of this facility and the expansion. So that will be part of that process. And then it should wrap up, based on this projection, April of '23. There's always the possibility of that being escalated, based on how we move through this timeline, but that is our projected timeline. And to wrap it up, thank you to our excellent dispatchers. When we talk about calls for service, you think about the officers responding to a call, but we've given you several examples in our past presentations where you might have an accident call, and they'll be, they'll take 10, 15 phone calls, and that's each phone call, whether it's emergency or non-emergency, has to be answered by our dispatchers and our call-takers, and vet it out to make sure it's the same one. If it's not, enter a new call. So there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes just to get the officers out to the scene. They do an excellent job. A lot of times, what they do, you do not see, but if they weren't there to do it, you would see the results of them not being there. So we really appreciate the hard work they do. If you have any questions, myself, Kim Weber, Jack Shurak's available as well online if needed. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Solberg and Kim. Councilmember Yentes, as Chair of the CARES Act Subcommittee, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Chief, for the information, the presentation. When the Subcommittee met and kind of defined what its priorities were going to be, it was very important for the members that we try to use as much of those CARES monies to push out into the community. I think we achieved that objective. Three-quarters of the money has gone out, whether it's through nonprofits or business assistance, so I think that's important. But the original intent of the CARES money was specified for public safety. Obviously, putting that money into operations supplanted what they normally would use and gave us an opportunity to do some other good in the community, but we did feel that entertaining a, being able to accelerate a public safety objective was good within the purview of what those dollars were originally meant to be used for. And obviously, the need is there. I would encourage our team to come under budget if they can. There's no need, if we don't need $8 million, to spend all $8 million. And certainly, there will be other areas that those resources can be used. So appreciate the time and the presentation.
Any other comments from Councilmembers? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. And Chief, thanks for this. Certainly a need, and I'm happy to support this, happy to see the cost per square foot coming down a little bit. You know, I'm a broken record on that one, and, you know, I compare this to a future discussion that we're going to have on the Family Advocacy Center. I probably won't be here, but that came in originally at $800 a square foot. And here's the thing I just want to point out is, even though I think that 200 is a little high, but let's just go with it. I think that's a great model to look at. There's going to be a lot of empty real estate when that Family Advocacy Center is needed, and maybe this is a way to look at getting that, maybe meeting that goal. Because if we can do that at 221 versus 800, I think we'll get maybe even more than what we could hope for in there, but I thought for another day, but I think we can really, really benefit there. Thanks to the Subcommittee for bringing this forward, and look forward to supporting this and upgrading this. So thanks, all.
Can I get a motion for Item 19A?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Passes 7-0. Thank you, Mayor. That's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone. Move on to the, and I voted for that despite that stuff on your face, Chief.
Just to add, that we're doing No Shave November, so you'll see some fuzzy-faced cops for the next two months. So our goal is to raise at least $5,000 for our benevolent fund, so thus the beard. Thank you.
Good. It's pretty impressive he grew that in 10 days.
Yeah, that is impressive. Move on to public hearing items. Let me ask if there are any items anyone would like to pull out to discuss before I... Does anybody want, Item 27, we brought from the last month. Do we have any? Councilman Taylor, you have any information on that one?
Yeah. Can we just pull that, and then when you open, open the public?
You bet.
Yep.
Any other items? If not, then I'll open the public hearing on Items 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, and 29, and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Item 27, Councilman Taylor, you have some information?
Mayor, thank you. This is the item that we, well, for the public following here, this is a liquor license request. Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Alcohol License for Joey's Smoke Shop. We saw this a couple of weeks ago. There was some concern shared by our police department regarding this one, so we moved to continue this one and bring it up here. Just, I know we had a connection issue, and apologize to the Chief on that, but if Chief Solberg could come up and just share a little bit about what he was, what he's found. I think the question that we had, we heard from the applicant that things were taken care of, and there was maybe no issue, and we should approve it, but I think we wanted to wait until we hear from the Chief.
Mayor and Council, sorry for the technical difficulties last council meeting, but I spoke to Scottsdale PD, and I won't go into the details of the case. I will just state that there are still six felony charges that are pending. It was a year ago when the original charges were submitted, well, the case originated. The case was turned into the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. It was sent back to Scottsdale PD for some further work to be done. They have completed that, and they are in the process of resubmitting that case to the county attorney's office. So at this time, my request is still to not approve the license based on the pending criminal charges against the applicant. Any questions?
Mayor, I don't have any other questions for the Chief unless somebody else does, but I think that's very helpful information. I appreciate him sharing that, and my thought, unless there's any other input, is to not recommend this to the State Liquor Board, and maybe Chris can help us with the appropriate wording here. And I know we probably have to enter the reasons as stated, you know, as part of the minutes for our recommendation, should that carry, but is there any particular wording that's needed for that kind of a motion?
Chris, before we get, before we go to that, I know the applicant is here as part of the public hearing. Do we want to hear from him again? Counsel?
I think that would be appropriate. I also have a question for the Chief. I know some of those charges were marijuana-related. I suspect maybe those are probably going to be dropped, and, but there are still some outstanding charges that, you know, obviously are not going to be waived after Prop 207.
Yeah. Based on my reading of this criminal case and the passing of 207, it will not affect these charges because of the quantity?
Okay. The applicant, you're here. Please state your name and your city of residence, and go ahead.
Thank you for the councilmembers for allowing me to speak. My name is Christopher Robin from Scottsdale, Arizona. I did just have a statement that I did want to read.
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, there you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm a little soft-spoken, so I'm sorry about that. I'd like to address the accusations of the Scottsdale Police Department. As I stated in the last hearing, I was at the wrong place at the wrong time. The Scottsdale Police Department did not find marijuana in my home, my car, or on my person. The accusations of the department attempt to have this committee find me guilty of a crime prior to providing any possession or involvement with it. Also, although I understand that the police department is attempting to provide information to this committee for the sake of the license, the information they give are allegations and not facts that I have committed a crime. Nothing has been proven. Denial of this license will place a burden on collecting city and state taxes and on my business. The City of Gilbert will lose on taxable income based on accusations and nothing that has been proven, and my business, my employees, and I will lose on opportunity to grow at these hardest times that we're all going through. I ask that the committee overlook the Scottsdale Police Department's information for everything I have stated above. Simply stated, I have never been convicted of a crime. They have yet to bring charges or prove that I'm a criminal, and as of the moment, I am a business owner, trying to make it through these hard times by growing my business that I've worked hard to build and provide more growth for the community. I have paid the fees, and I have taken all training necessary to obtain this license, and I ask that this committee grant me my license. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This time, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Council for discussion and possible motion. Yes, vice mayor.
Outside of the accusations from Scottsdale PD, I wanted to make a statement that I believe citizens have the right to enjoy whatever hobbies in their homes allowed by law, and we have little desire to infringe upon those rights. But having these rights does not explicitly inform the consumer on the danger of mixing substances in a smoke shop and with liquor. A one-stop shop such as this could represent an inherent endorsement of mixing substances with negative results, and I believe it does not offer any benefit to this community.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I have something. And again, this is, this has nothing to do with the applicant or the pending cases against him, but generally, vape shops, tobacco shops are regulated by the ATF, and cities, towns, states have little to do with regulating their behavior. The result of that is, you know, the ATF and the government, federal government, does not have the resources to adequately regulate at the local level and to ensure compliance with local laws. And I think the result of that, we all see with minors having access to tobacco products and vape products, and I think it's a problem today, and I would hate to see the idea of adding another product that has to be regulated and put that in the hands of people who have already demonstrated an inability to adequately control the products that they sell now. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Tilke.
I'm going to ask a process question. I understand that when we talked previously about the Council's role in liquor license, approving, not approving, and we're a recommending body. However, I thought, and maybe not during the recent discussion, but years ago, that we are put in some type of liability risk factor by denying a liquor license. So I just wanted to make sure we're not in that position. And then the second piece, Chris, is, again, process-wise, typically when there is some kind of litigation going on, do we normally get involved in a situation until after that's settled? I'm just trying to figure out where our role is in all of that.
Are you talking about in this case until after everything's settled with Scottsdale?
Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Tilke, for your first question, as far as liability, the Council's role here is to make a recommendation or no recommendation to the board. If the Council's decision is to make a recommendation of denial, the board will have a separate hearing, and it could still go ahead and approve it. As far as liability to the town, I don't see any. The town council has legislative immunity under state law. In your role right now as council, you are immune on these type of decisions. So there's no liability that could incur to you individually or to the town based on that. And then on the second question about waiting until an indictment, you know, is filed and the charges are filed, I think that's just a decision for council. Whether you believe that, you know, the Scottsdale Police Department's investigation, you know, if that's enough to recommend denial, then you may do that, or you can just go ahead and make no recommendation because the charges have not been filed yet. They're sitting either with the police department or with the county attorney's office.
Thank you. Mayor, so I felt awkward asking the questions, so I'm trying to figure out the best way. It sounded like there was discussion that really had more to do with making a recommendation or not based on the type of business that he's putting forth, which is separate than And so I'm a bit concerned that we make decisions based on the type of business from, I guess I'd say, a moral perspective or a philosophical perspective. And by doing so, does that set a precedent for the decisions we'll be making in the future? If that makes sense.
It does, and I think we've had this discussion before with Mayor Lewis, and I know Councilmember Taylor, too, where I don't think it sets a precedence. If, it depends on the case, and we have to consider all those factors. And as Chris said, we can choose to make no recommendation, just because we are the recommending body to the State Liquor Board. Councilman Taylor?
Can I just follow up on the no recommendation process question from Councilmember Tilke? If we, if the motion that passes is no recommendation, does it still move forward to the State Liquor Board?
Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Taylor, correct. No matter what the recommendation is, whether you recommend approval of the license, you recommend disapproval, or no recommendation, it will move forward regardless.
Got it. Mayor, if I may, because Councilmember Tilke brings up an interesting point, if a recommendation for denial comes out of this council, we're required to state the reasons why. I think that's where we can make the decision of, if we're taking a moral position on this versus we're upholding, we're recommending it based on, you know, the action from the Scottsdale Police Department and the concern that we have on, you know, X, Y, and Z relative to that. I think that's a distinction that the council can make, because we have to itemize the reasons why we would have a denial. I think that's where the opportunity is to make the distinction you're making is a thought there.
And that's the language that Chris has. If we do recommend denial, there is specific language we need to include.
Correct. And Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Taylor, to your point, I don't think it has to be exclusive of each other. If there's multiple reasons for a recommendation of approval or denial, you can put those in the record. The motion could be something simply as a motion to recommend approval or disapproval based on, you know, the reasons set forth by Chief Solberg and the council in the discussion, and then the board can refer to the minutes for the actual reasons given.
Mayor, if I may ask another question? If I may, there's, and maybe this is for the town manager, in the packet, the staff is recommending a motion for this. While we heard concern from the police chief not to recommend this, is there anything that we're missing that staff felt was important enough to override the chief's recommendation to deny?
Councilmember, I guess I misunderstood. My understanding was there was no recommendation from the staff.
It says recommended motion, a motion to issue in order to recommend, okay, I'm sorry, I misread that. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I, if I may, it's a little bit confusing because that first part says recommended, recommended motion, and then- motion, and then if you go to the very end where it says staff recommendation, it says staff feels such requests are solely council's prerogative and offers no recommendation. So the potential motion is the disapproval, but it's up to the council what you want to do.
Mayor, if I might just add my two cents, because I've ruminated on this issue quite a bit, and, you know, I want to be supportive of our businesses. I know it's a struggle right now. I don't want to be a regulatory burden. However, and I kind of struggle to kind of pair this with which, with the reason why we're even talking about it, which is obviously this matter of justice hasn't been adjudicated. So, you know, as a tenant of our justice system, we believe people are innocent until proven guilty, and that can be sussed out from a court level. And so I don't think that this actually, a recommendation to deny this would run amok of that principle, simply because, you know, we have certain inalienable rights, and the right to a liquor license is not one of them. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but I mean that from, you know, whether we're talking about occupational licensing or liquor licenses, there is a government interest to regulate it, and specifically because these charges have a nexus to the kind of business that it is, you know, these kinds of substances. I do think, just like if we were to look at, you know, pending charges for a CPA trying to become licensed, and he had, you know, issues of fraud, we would look at that nexus with a great concern. And so I do think, at the end of the day, it falls to the applicant to, maybe this is bad timing, and if he wanted to pursue this kind of liquor license at another time, I think that that would be a business decision and something that we can't make for you. And because of that, I think that we are just another regulatory body in this process, and unfortunately, maybe the timing is bad, but I do think that the businesses in these cases, in these regulatory environments, do have the onus is on them to prove that they have the privilege to be granted a business, a license to sell alcohol, and especially just considering the particulars of this case. So I would feel comfortable, you know, making a recommendation to deny this. It pains me to say because I do want to be helpful to our business community, and I just, there are other businesses that sell both substances, so I don't necessarily think that the mixing in this institution is a problem, but just given the information that we have today with the, you know, knowledge that we have, I think that that's probably the wisest decision.
Thank you. Would you like to put that in a motion?
Mayor, could I ask another question before you do that?
Yes.
At the last meeting, I thought that we gave the applicant the opportunity to ask for that to be continued, and perhaps this would be the time to ask the applicant if he would be willing to withdraw this request at this time and come back when the legal issues are resolved.
And I don't know if that's possible, but, you know, that would be, that would be great, because I suspect a negative recommendation would be, you know, more unfavorable to the applicant than, you know, coming back after it's been adjudicated.
You'd like to address that?
Yes, I would like to address that. The fact of the matter is that in my situation right now with what's going on in the world today and how it's affected my businesses, you know, I have currently nine businesses, and during everything that's been going on, I've been able to stay open, I've been able to keep all my employees employed, and to help them provide a life for their family and a life for my family. And I feel like with it being over a year and me not have any charges brought up, you know, I don't know how long this process could take. And, you know, I'm just trying to do everything that I can right now to keep my business afloat, and I feel like bringing in another stream of revenue would probably be one of the only ways that I can keep this business operating in the City of Gilbert. So I would not want to withdraw my request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'll ask if there's a motion.
Yes, I motion that we recommend a disapproval of the license on Agenda Item 27.
Second language, Chris, that we need to include?
Just if, Councilmember Yentes, if you include for the reasons set forth in the discussion?
Yes, for the reasons that were set forth in the discussion by council.
There's been a motion, and I heard a second. Who's the second?
Mayor, there's a second, and can I comment?
Sure.
Very rarely do we recommend denial, so there's, I don't see any precedent being set on a regular basis, or small businesses that are applying for these are supported nearly categorical. When's the last time, Patrick, we even had a denial on this? Maybe five or six years ago, possibly. So the concern about setting a precedent, I don't think is that big of a concern, because Kathy, you followed council meetings forever and ever, so I don't think this will change or set any kind of precedence, because largely we've supported liquor licenses almost at every series that come through, and I think the council will continue to do that.
And we really struggle with that, because it gives, if we were to do that too often, it gives the impression we're picking winners and losers, and we don't want to do that. But I agree with Councilmember Taylor, we do this so often, it's, I don't know how many times we've done it in the last 15 or 20 years, to tell you the truth. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That passes 7-0. Thank you. Move on to administrative items. Item 30, council administration, consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2021. Do we have a motion? Is it a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Passes 7-0. Any boards, commissions, committee assignments from council liaisons? Any reports that any of you would like to give?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman September.
Yeah, thank you. So as a liaison to economic development here in Gilbert, I have an announcement. This is kind of a fun one, having to do with our new Gilbert Regional Park. Bill Spence, Councilmember Spence, in his last few days as council member, worked very closely with Dan Henderson, our Economic Development Director, and Robert Carmona, our Parks Director, and put together the following. November 20th through 22nd, at Gilbert Regional Park, the inaugural Gilbert Grand Slam Sand Volleyball Tournament will kick off. The Sand Club, the largest sand volleyball organization in the state, in partnership with the town of Gilbert and Park University, will be hosting what will be one of Arizona's largest sand volleyball tournaments. Three-time women's sand volleyball Olympic gold medalist Carrie Walsh Jennings will be there all three days to play, meet players, and host clinics. She's excited to come to Gilbert and help kick off this first event of many that will ultimately make Gilbert the premier venue for sand volleyball here in the state and throughout the Southwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? There are no policy items, future agenda items. I do have a short statement that has to do with our efforts on our rebranding project in Gilbert. We found that after further discussion and evaluation of the Gilbert rebranding project, we are working with the Office of Digital Government to review the new branding that was approved during our special council meeting on October 28th. This process will involve council members. We have three council members that have volunteered to be involved, employees, and other stakeholders to evaluate potential adjustments prior to a public launch of our rebranding project. We plan to bring this item back for consideration during the December 15th council meeting and launch publicly immediately thereafter. So I just wanted you all to know what's happening with the rebrand, because I know you've been hearing things out there about those efforts. So that kind of gives us a timeline that we'll be working on that. And thank you for those of you that have volunteered to work with our digital office.
Mayor, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Thanks for, and thanks for that update. I think that makes a lot of sense based on the discussion that we had. Who are the three people that are on that subcommittee, in case I wanted to give some feedback?
Councilmember September.
Okay.
Councilmember Yentes and Councilmember Tilke.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Anderson, just to clarify.
Yes, Chris.
This is a reconsideration of the resolution that approved the logo and brand?
It will be on the 15th.
Okay, so per code, they would have to be on the first. That's when that agenda item would have to come up, the reconsideration motion, because that's the next council meeting. And then at that council meeting, the council could take a vote to continue that to the 15th.
To the 15th.
But we'll have to put it on the first.
Sure, that works. Works fine. Thank you. Communications, any communications from the town manager on current events?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I want to recognize a few employees who have been recognized by their peers around the state. First, Jennifer Graves, who is the deputy director in our Office of Economic Development, was recognized as the Economic Developer of the Year by the Arizona Association for Economic Development. Jennifer does great work for us. I believe most of you have had the opportunity to meet her, but if you see her, I know she would appreciate hearing from you, and congratulations for the great recognition that is well-deserved. Also, John Tilton, who is a senior plans examiner in our building department, was selected as the Plan Reviewer of the Year by the Arizona Building Officials Organization. So that's great recognition of the work that John does. And in January, our building official, Larry Taylor, will become the president of the Arizona Building Officials. I wanted to once again thank Lisa Maxwell for her service to this community and the organization. She was well-liked by everybody that worked with her, and her presence will be missed, but we greatly look forward to working with Chevelli in her new capacity as our town clerk. Also, I wanted to thank Bill Spence for his time on the council. It was only eight months, but I'm sure in many ways it felt like eight years to him. This year has had a certain dog-year sense to it for all of us, but we appreciate working with Bill. And we also want to welcome our newest councilman, Lauren Hendricks. We look forward to working with you on behalf of all of the organization and the employees at Gilbert, Arizona. I also want to give a special recognition to an employee that you often hear from myself, from Chris, from our chief of police, from our directors, but we have an amazing group of people that you don't often get to interact with and hear reports from. And the work Kim Weber has done on our dispatch expansion is just phenomenal, and she is a phenomenal leader in dispatch. That is a very, very difficult job, and we greatly value Kim and couldn't be more proud of the work she's done in helping us advance this worthwhile project. So thank you, Kim. We appreciate you, even if we don't always get to see you and all the other employees just like you as often as we'd like to. With that, that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from council on current events? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Today is my late father's birthday, and he was an Army veteran. My late father-in-law was a veteran of the Vietnam War, and he never wished to speak about his experiences. So I wanted to make this statement because Veterans Day is tomorrow. We live in a time where we understand more than ever that lingering issues can, that some vets relive every day of their lives, can really affect them. And so I just wanted to mention or ask that, as we also thank our military servicemen and women, that we also take a chance to take some time out of our lives to listen to their experiences and really understand what they've gone through. So a big thank you to our veterans. Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment and thank the staff for the, allowing me to sit in on the unconscious bias training this last week and a half. It was a seven-hour training, and it's my understanding that the team, the executive team here, and now the supervisors have all gone through this training, and now the, all of the employees are going through a portion of it as well. And it's really a testament to the town's commitment to diversity, equality, and inclusiveness within their own organization, and I'm really hoping that we're going to be able to take what we've learned from that and include that in our community conversations that we're going to be having in the future. But I really appreciate it, being part of it. I'm hoping that as council members, if you didn't sign up for it, that you will. It was time well-spent. It makes you really stop and think about your own thoughts every day, and just makes you a kinder person, for sure. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else? From Mayor on current events, I just want to follow up a little bit on what Vice Mayor Kowalski was talking about on Veterans Day this whole week, and actually last week, we celebrated veterans out of the regional park, and I want to thank the Parks Department for a wonderful event that we were able to carry off out there. I was so happy to hear that I may still be on the council when we christen the Arizona, so I don't want to miss that. And I'm so thankful that Nikki and that Bill has found Nikki, and Nikki has participated with us here in the community. And speaking of Veterans Day, tomorrow is Veterans Day. If any of you do have the opportunity, I know in years past, we've gone over and participated with Mesa in their parade, and this year they're doing a reverse parade, I guess. The cars will drive by the floats, and I think the chief, I think we have the police department's going to be there, and some others that will be there. If you have the opportunity, unfortunately, I can't, but if you have that opportunity, I'd encourage you to go over and be involved with them. Last thing, I was going, it's kind of a sinister motive. I was going to invite the mayor-elect to come up and say something, but my motive was really to see if she'd come up and do it, and I could push the mute button up here and see if it really works. It works up here? Okay. We'll listen to you later then. If there's nothing else, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.